Hello, everyone. Let's follow the Thursday of May 19. This is meeting Borough Council to order. It's going to be Pledge of Allegiance. Harper.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, our nation, our God, and the principle of the religion and justice for all.
So we, before this meeting and after the last meeting, we held an executive session to discuss disposition of Borough property off the 201 state line. That was on the 10th and the 19th. We've held two executive sessions to discuss disposition of Borough property.
We also discussed-
And also discussed personnel issues at the 101. Thank you. And Ms. Bryant, you call it all.
Sure. Council President Fred Bush.
Here.
Council Vice President Michelle Panopoulos.
Here.
Council Member Barbara Fortner.
Here.
Council Member Rob McGrady.
Here.
Council Member Cindy Rickards.
Here.
Council Member Bob Weisberg.
Here.
Council Member Ira Winston.
Here.
Mayor Andrea Deutsch.
Here.
Okay. Are there any agenda additions or changes? Okay. Move on to my comments. So as you can see, everyone's wearing masks. The Montgomery County has moved officially into moderate transmission with COVID. It is, COVID rates continue to rise. So take advantage of the federal government's offer of COVID tests. I just ordered eight more yesterday. Take advantage of extra boosters that are available. And please just be careful, everyone. That's it. So Ms. Mayor, do you have comments to report?
Very brief. I just want to tag on to Fred's comments and say if you feel sick, please stay home. And it is really advised to wear a mask when you're in an indoor setting. So when you're in our stores and inside settings, it's advised that you wear a mask to keep yourself safe. And those masks, in best practices, should be KN95s or N95s that are well-fitting. They are the ones that provide you the most protection. I just wanted to encourage people to do what they can to keep themselves safe. The only other thing is I want to remind folks that a week from Monday, our Memorial Day parade is back and it's very exciting. Thanks to Don Nordi realizing everything and getting it together. And so it begins, I believe, at 9:30. And it should take the usual route, you know, around and then down. So and then followed by a ceremony at the War Memorial. So please encourage everybody to come out and give thanks for those who've made the ultimate sacrifice. Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor. All right. So the next item is a discussion with SEPTA about the Route 44 Plus service and a proposal for microtransit. Public comment will be after that discussion. We don't anticipate a council vote, so.
All right. So I'm very grateful to a couple folks here who are with us from SEPTA tonight. I'm going to unmute both of them and add them to the screen. We look forward to hearing any update they can provide on the Route 44 bus. So Dan and Harley, thank you both for being here tonight with us.
Thank you. My name is Dan Nemroff. I am the project manager for Bus Revolution. I'm here. Wendy, do you want to introduce yourself as well? We have one other person from SEPTA on the call. I just want to give her a chance to introduce herself.
Oh, sorry. Let me, sorry about that one. I didn't see SEPTA in your name, so sorry about that there. There you go.
But she's still here.
Nice.
Can you hear me? Okay.
Can now.
That's fine. Good evening. I'm Wendy Green Harvey from SEPTA's Public and Government Affairs Department. And I don't want to belabor the moment, but Dan Nemroff was introducing himself. He is a project manager for Bus Revolution. And Harley, if you would like to introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Harley Cooper. I work in SEPTA's Service Planning Department. I'm managing the implementation of microtransit as part of the Bus Revolution. So Dan's going to do the presentation, but I'm happy to answer any, or at least try to answer any, microtransit questions after.
Great. So I, I'm, okay. So I'm going to try to share a little bit because I'm sure you have a lot of questions, but I want to provide a little bit of context about the project. It says I can't share, so maybe I'll just talk. So where we are in the Bus Revolution process is we are in the scenario evaluation phase. So last month-
I'm going to make you a co-host, so if you do have something on your screen you want to share, you'd be able to do that.
Okay, perfect.
I'm going to do the same for Wendy and Harley so they can unmute themselves if they need to add anything.
Great. So let me just show from current slide. Okay. So this is just a very, very simplified project approach traffic. It shows you where we are in the process. So we began with last year, starting with a lot of background, really trying to understand the current state of the system. We looked at ridership pre-COVID, during COVID, and, you know, I guess what we thought of at the time as late-stage COVID, but who knows? We did a bunch of, we did, we did a bunch of public engagement that culminated in a survey that was done in last fall. And then we took all that information, all that analysis that we did with the survey responses, and put together two different scenarios that we think are improvements over the current bus system. We are going, we are in another round of engagement right now. We are sharing these two options with people. We actually just came off a different call talking about the network in North Philadelphia. And we're going to get public feedback. We're going to then take all that feedback and make our decision as to what, one, the preferred network looks like, and then share that back out again in the fall. And like I said before, there are two network options. And I'm going to skip ahead. There are two network options, but they, just because, just the existing network is always there. So, but we know what people have think about it. They've been, they've been complaining about it for years. So we're going to take all of this public feedback we get and turn it into sort of this preferred option. I'll bring the slides up in a minute and we can talk specifically about Route 44. But just again, more context. The, the options are both cost neutral, which means it's done with the same operating budget, the same number of vehicles, same number of operators as, as we have in spring 2022. We are going to use, this is an opportunity to identify future enhancements if we are granted an increase in an operating budget, which is obviously awesome and, you know, we hope happens. But we haven't been guaranteed that at this point, but it is something the general manager would like us to do. Both network options feature simplified network design, which means less patterns, fewer turns, more direct service, frequent and reliable connections, increasing access, and then improved service quality again, which is easier to use and understand, more consistent service levels during the weekend, on the weekend, that kind of thing. I'm going to go through this really quickly, just so we can get to your questions. But the way the networks are shared are, we've broken them out into sort of these tiers of frequency with frequent bus service, you know, either 10 or 15-minute service, 30-minute service, and then 60-minute service or 60-max service. And what these designations mean are the worst a route gets is 10-minute service between 6:00 AM and 9:00 PM. You know, at least during the week. We're still trying to figure out the weekend service. It's a little more complicated, but generally that's where we're going. I'm going to, I'll hold most of the microtransit talk for Harley, but we are using this project as an opportunity to introduce the concept of microtransit or just sort of on-demand flex service. Harley, do you want to talk for a minute about this?
So the idea behind microtransit is we are going to replace some of our poorly performing fixed route services, which tend to be on the geographic fringes of our network as, you know, sort of the farther stretches of Chester County and Montgomery County and Bucks County. And we will be replacing them with microtransit zones. So that will be on-demand or you schedule it in advance. Sort of like the next generation of Dial-A-Ride, but you use a cell phone app or you can use our call center to schedule that. And beyond that, there are a few other. We'll also be using it to replace some of our regional rail feeder service. So we have a few bus routes which are not near Norbert, but that feed into regional rail stations and connect the regional rail to some suburban office parks. So we'll be, also be looking at it for those purposes. It'll be curb-to-curb service. That's the model. We're kind of working through a lot of the service design for microtransit, but what we've been talking about at this point is curb-to-curb. So it would take you to, you know, similar to a bus stop. And, but they're sort of different models that we're working through that. And it would be priced the same as a transit trip. So the same as riding a bus and it would be fully ADA accessible. So that is the model that we're, we're working through right now. I don't, Dan, is that?
No, that's good. No, that was perfect. I think, I think the key thing here is that we view it as, as part of our system. It's sort of a part of our sort of suite of modes. We don't view it as a standalone mode. I just want to, you know, but I think that was a good-
Yeah. It's fully integrated. It's seamless. And the idea is that there are certain areas that are just, it's real, you know, density is so low that it's hard to provide fixed route service. And our fixed route service is pretty infrequent. It's like every 60 minutes, minutes on some of these routes. And the idea being that microtransit provides a level of customer convenience that we think will add, that we think will provide a benefit to our customers.
Thank you. I'll, you know, real quickly again, network option, so again, two network options. They are, I think they are more similar to each other than the current, they are to the current network, but some key, key differences between the two. Network Option 1 is simpler and more streamlined. It has much fewer routes than our current system. And that's not to say it's a reduction in overall service. It's not. It's the same number of service hours, just consolidated onto fewer routes. Network, so Network Option 1, because of the sort of intense frequency is sort of, you know, where we think it's needed, is sort of the less waiting. And then Network Option 2 puts some of that service back and that is the less walking of the two. Here's Network Option 1, just sort of geographically, you know, on a network level. And all of these, these are all available online. And, and you know, you can, you can do a deep dive. You know, the red is the, is the 10 minutes or better. The purple is the 15 and the blue is the 30-minute runner. And the, the key here is there's no 60-minute service. Everything is 30 minutes or better, which is a huge departure from today. Those grayed-out areas are the identified microtransit zones in Option 1. Network Option 2, there's a lot more purple and blue, not as much red. And there's yellow. Those are the 60-minute routes that we've effectively put back onto the map. And there are fewer microtransit zones. And again, just to kind of reiterate what Harley said before, we think microtransit in some of these really far-flung areas is an improvement. Again, here are just some summary stats between the two. You can see the number of bus routes, the number of frequent routes. Obviously, Network Option 1, over half of all the routes we've identified. And that includes quite a few routes in the suburbs. Annual bus hours is roughly the same, but you know, there's going to be a lot of work done on that one as we refine our concept. And then the percent of riders within a quarter mile of the network. I'd like to take a pause here because obviously you invited us and I want to make sure we have time. I don't know how much time we have, but I'm happy to, we can talk through more specifics now. As Harley and Wendy can attest to, I could literally talk forever. So I'm happy to just stop and answer questions at this point. And we can share and then talk more, that kind of thing, as you ask questions.
Yeah. So I mean, the agenda item on our agenda was about the future of the Route 44 bus service, which is the one I guess that comes by here. So you could address how the Route 44 is affected into these scenarios.
Sure. The Route 44 is not in either scenario. It's in, it's not in the first scenario at all. And in the second scenario, we've replaced the Norbert and Gladwin pieces with microtransit. That is how we've, that is what the two proposals say. I'll say a couple of things about the Route 44. And I want to add that I'm an Ardmore resident, so I know, I know this area real well. But the, one of the things that's, one of the things about the 44 that's really important is that the, by far the highest ridership on the 44 is on City Avenue, which has a lot of other service on it. So that makes up, outside of the city, center city, that makes up the vast majority of the ridership on the route. The other thing that I think is worth noting is that the 44 is a route that always had really, really, really low off-peak and weekend ridership. It's always been a very commuter-oriented route. So what has happened over the last two years is that routes that are highly reliant on typical commuting service have effectively, their ridership has not come back. So the ridership, while a route, like, I'm trying to think of like a route like, like a route like the 106 or a route like, I don't know, like a route like the 40, routes that operate like either in the city or routes that operate sort of in other parts of the suburbs, those routes are back to about 50 to 60% of where they were pre-COVID. Or like the 44 is like still at like 20%, 25% pre-COVID. So I think that, you know, it's a situation where, you know, it's, it's a tricky, it's a tricky kind of thread or highway walking, but that's, those are how the two proposals deal with the 44. As I said before, the existing network is always there. We, we know that, you know, we know that we may have to think about putting elements of it back into our, one of the preferred option, but that, that, you know, you asked. So that's, that's, that's where we are with that one. But like I said before, we're soliciting a lot of feedback. So this is a really good opportunity for people to provide input into, you know, those ideas and let me know if they like them or they think they're bad or what have you.
Hi, Dan. Mayor Deutsch here. I had a question. When it looked like the microtransit, it looked like you had to book it like a day in advance. No? How, what's the shortest time you can book it? Can you, like, how much lead time will they need to know that they need, they need a service?
So that's a service parameter that we, we haven't gotten to that decision yet, but that's a policy decision once we procure the software that we'll set up in the software. What we've sort of been talking about is, well, you know, we haven't, we, you know, we've talked about the, having the ability to schedule it in advance and then the ability to book it in real time. And with the idea, we're kind of playing with this idea of a 30. Yeah. I'm struggling to answer that because we haven't got, that's like a very detailed policy question. We haven't quite gotten there yet. We're, we're still working through some of the pieces with microtransit, thinking about, you know, what kind of vehicles we would procure for this service. And we haven't procured our software for it yet, but that's a policy decision we would get at a little bit later on.
It kind of seems like this is a more affordable Uber, kind of.
Yeah. We like, sometimes people describe, we're trying to do that, but some people do describe it as like Uber and Lyft meets like a transit vehicle. So you schedule, and that's, you know, Dial-A-Ride has been around for a really long time, but this current generation that we're calling microtransit really came from those TNCs like Uber and Lyft and kind of saying, well, you know, we're losing a lot of riders to Uber and Lyft. And what can we learn from what they're providing? Why are people going to that mode? And so some of the things that we've seen are people like that, the access to information. They want to be able to look at their phone and see when the, you know, the vehicle is coming and they have that. And the ability to, you know, request a trip and to schedule it that way. So we're, so yes, you're very right.
I think something that's also important to note, and I think that's, is that when, is that microtransit isn't a good fit everywhere. Like if you look at both of the network options, like it's not, we don't view it as something that's going to work in the city, really. There's always going to be a, when you're in the city, there's always going to be a fixed route that's close by, that's going to run at, you know, a much higher frequency than, than, you know, microtransit would. But in some parts of the region, and in Network Option 2, you know, Norbert and Gladwin are sort of included in that zone. So that's, you know, that's sort of part of the underlying philosophy too. We don't want to, part of the, part of the reason we're doing this project is that we have a lot of redundant services that compete with each other. And we don't want microtransit to compete with fixed route bus service. We want it to be a complement to fixed route service and a complement to regional rail service. So that's, that's part of the philosophy here.
Yeah. The rule of thumb that we use is if a bus route serves 10 or more passengers per hour, it makes sense to keep that on a bus. But we have routes that have productivities, you know, more like five, six, seven passengers per hour. But we really need to keep that service where it is because people rely on it, but it's just not productive and we can't put the frequencies out there that people need. And so microtransit allows us to have a more frequent, especially in scenario one that Dan touched on, you know, a frequent 30-minute like spine to our network and then the microtransit that feeds into it. So it gives us, you know, it gives people access to the system through microtransit and then, you know, a frequent trip on the, on the fixed route.
Sorry. Finally, sorry. Norbert is a very green community. We're very environmentally conscious. I understand that the buses probably are, use a whole lot of fuel. Will you be using green vehicles?
I think Dan's, do you want to talk about the ZEB bus?
Yeah, sure. No. That's true. And that's, I do, like it's, as a local, I do commend the borough for being so progressive on those fronts. So the idea, so SEPTA is going through a very large-scale ZEB study, a zero-emission bus study. And transitioning from our sort of current, you know, hybrid diesel to electric or, you know, FCEB buses, fuel cell buses, is extremely complex. We're committed to doing it. I don't have any timeline for you. That, that commitment will carry over to the microtransit space. So, but that, like, part of the microtransit playbook project that Harley is managing is going to be sorting through procurement. And we, we want to make sure that the procurement of the vehicles is consistent with the authority's greater goals of transitioning to zero-emission vehicles. So, and, and we want to do it correctly. Like there's a lot of complicated things that we have to confront about adopting a microtransit network. Like saying we're going to do it is kind of like the easy part. Like figuring out actually how it works is really tricky. So we want to do it really, we want to do it right. We want to do it smart. And, and it's going to require a little more time. So where you might see bus network redesign changes go into effect next year, microtransit will likely extend, it'll go later. It won't, it's unlikely to happen all at once, just because there are much, there are a lot of serious questions that the microtransit playbook project has to ask.
So I actually have had some experience with microtransit bus service. So in my, when I, I was, one of the things I'm really proud of is there's the Doylestown area regional transit system or DOR. And I was really proud of expanding that bus service from just Doylestown to the New Britain area. And I got to know about how it worked. And part of what they offered was similar to what has been described here by SEPTA. It's given the density of that route or, you know, or given that area of, you know, the state, the lower density of the bus route, a microtransit service was offered in their off-peak time. So especially like in the evenings, on the weekends, even on late, like Friday and Saturday night for some of the college students in the area. And it was a tremendously successful program. I don't think they even had an app. So I get a lot of credit for thinking about doing that. It was a literal, you had to do, like make a phone call to get it. And it seemed to be really popular and worked out well. You know, so I just want to maybe relay some of the feedback about how microtransit might work. Admittedly, in a less dense area than what we're talking about here, but I think a similar sort of ridership situation to what was described in terms of riders per hour and that kind of thing.
All right. So I have, I have some concerns here, concerning that we are being asked to give up something that we, is known sort of reliable quantity, which is the 44 bus, which for, you know, something new. I understand a lot of places where microtransit has been adopted, it's proven, they've stopped doing it for reasons of cost, that it doesn't serve as many people as they're expecting. You know, there's significant cost to, you know, running a car for one or two people an hour. It gets expensive compared to a, to a bus. So I guess I'd like to know what would happen if we were assigned to a microtransit and then it proved to be more expensive than you would expect? Are we going to lose everything at that point?
I mean, I think that, so a couple of things. I think the first is that, like, sort of the, the metrics that we use to evaluate microtransit, like the metrics that we use to evaluate all of our services are going to be something that definitely gets, you know, thought through and vetted, you know, publicly as part of this project. I think it's a really fair question. You know, if we, if we make a change and it doesn't bear immediate fruit, like how would we adjust it? I think the one thing I can say is that I think that whatever we wind up implementing in the end, I think that we have to let it season for a while. I don't think it's something where we're going to make a bunch of changes, changes on a scale that we've never done before, and then just give it a few months or give it a year and kill it. I think that's unlikely. The other thing I'll say is that, you know, one of the things we want to do through this project and through sort of, and as we go forward, is we want to make our service development process a lot more responsive and, and, and not, not so reactive, not, not finding out about stuff down the line. We want to, we want our development process to be transparent and responsive to changes on the ground and that, that type of thing. So I think, I don't have like a clear-cut answer for you. You know, we have these two options, but like I said before, the Route 44 does have, you know, there, there may be changes that we haven't considered, that you retain some of the Route 44. But, 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 you know, I think the commitment is we know we need to make some changes and we want to make those changes sort of understandable and clear. And, you know, we'll be, you know, talking to you more through this process. And then, like I said before, like, microtransit will likely come later, which would likely mean that, you know, the Route 44 or something would remain, you know, in, you know, in and around Norbert until, you know, microtransit may come along. But we haven't figured out exactly how that transition works yet.
Yeah. I just want to add something to that and sort of expand on what Dan mentioned. You know, one of the tasks in Bus Revolution is evaluating and expanding our service standards and our service development process. And we currently have this board-approved definition of a major service change. And so if we had a very poorly performing route and we wanted to discontinue it, there's a whole process behind discontinuing it. And that protects the people who rely on that service, right? They can come to our public hearing, they can testify. We take all of that into account. And so as we're working with our Bus Revolution consultants to update our service standards, you know, I think that's a really excellent point. And I'm glad you brought that up because that's something that we will build into both the service standards for microtransit, but then also that service development process and, and build in some safeguards. You know, so that if microtransit is not productive enough, if it's not cost-effective enough, that it's not serving the community well, that we would have, you know, an official board-approved process that the public, all of our stakeholders have an opportunity to, to comment on.
And I'll just also point out, I mean, I looked at your analysis of the Route 44 bus on the Bus Revolution site. And it talks about Norbert Station having a higher than usual proportion of people getting on and off. It's, in terms of the number of people boarding, it's more than a lot of the routes that are continuing. I mean, it's 33 per hour. I guess that includes the city line routes that you were mentioning. So, I mean, I look at this and I looked at your sort of performance metrics from, I guess, 2019, which is before the pandemic. And the 44 is still on the kind of acceptable level. And some of the routes that are being kept are, were well below. So, you know, so I, I guess I'm a little skeptical that it's beyond saving. you know, so I, I guess I'm a little skeptical that it's beyond saving. Or that it's not worthwhile to continue as a, as a route, but
Yeah.
Yeah. Question. I think I'm going to let other people ask a question.
Just a clarification question. Because I didn't, I'm not trying to restore a hard rock. Okay, so there's two network options being considered right now. Network option two would be the one with the microtransit?
As a queue.
Well, uh, transit is involved in both that. What I didn't understand, Dan said, I think after I, maybe I asked you about how Route 44 was affected. I didn't say it's not in either scenario and one, it's just not there. And two is does that mean in network option one, it's just not there at all?
Yeah. Yeah. Sorry. You were cutting out a lot. I think I caught the question. So there are two network options. The network option one, Route 44 is gone and there's no, there's no service replacing it. And network option two, it's been replaced by microtransit. So those are the two network options that we're getting feedback on now.
Yeah, I just, I, I just, when I'm hearing conversations about 44, I realize there's really two 44s in our area because there's the 44 via Norbert, which intersects, has a hub with the Norbert train station. And there's the 44 that, that just travels directly along Montgomery Avenue. So when you're talking about the, the, the microtransit option, are you assuming that the 44 that travels Montgomery Avenue would continue and there would be a microtransit option for the via Norbert Park with the train station hub?
No. So the, the 44 has, has many, has a, has a few different patterns. There's the two that you said before, but then there's parts that go out, go out to Gladwin as well. So the, the way microtransit, the way we've thought through microtransit and Harley can jump in, it's like Norbert Station would become sort of the contact point for the microtransit network, like the regional rail station. For people who wanted to go to points, sort of, whether, whether they were on Montgomery Avenue or out in Gladwin, which would also be losing its fixed route bus service. They could use, they would, they would come to, they would, they could either, there would be a microtransit zone that would effectively cover like Montgomery Avenue out to Gladwin. So that would be how people would, would, would use the microtransit network. I think I have that right, Harley. We may, we have a lot to figure out here, but that's, I think, the general gist of it. What I was saying before though is like we're shit, we have, we have, but we're also, you know, the, the current, the current network, like the current system is always something that we have to take into consideration too. So we're not talking about it during this phase of the project very much, but it's something that's always there.
And, and also just to add, when we talk about the, the two networks and, and Dan might've said this, I just want to reiterate it because I think it's important. We're not talking about implementing either one of these networks, or play as they're, they're presented. It's really about creating a dialogue with the public and to, you know, get an exchange of ideas going so that we can, you know, we kind of put two really big ideas out there to have conversations like this. And we are doing a lot of public engagement in the field of transportation centers at community events to, to talk to, to folks about this. So just because you see the two network options there, it's not black and white.
Yeah, thank you. I didn't say that, but that's a really good point. We're not asking people to vote. It's not like a binary choice. It's very much like, here are two ideas. Tell us what you like. Tell us what you hate. A lot of what people don't like doesn't refers more to what's happening currently. So really there are three networks that we're considering, but that's, the, the point is not to say we're either implementing one or two. The point is that we're going to have to sort of figure out what the best path forward is. It's about putting different ideas out there like Harley said.
I have a question. When do you plan on making this decision as to which, what you're going to resort with?
We will, we're gonna, we're gonna be out with this round of engagement until the end of June. So people are going to be submitting, you know, input on our survey or emailing us through the end of June. Then we're going to spend the summer putting together that preferred network option. We'll be back out in the public with the preferred option, which is going to be one option, which, and it will be sort of, this is what we would like to do. What do you think? And then we'll be soliciting feedback on that one for two months, probably September through November. And then we'll go back into the lab, you know, at the end of 2022. Address the feedback that we got on the preferred option. And then in January or so, we would begin the implementation phase of the project, which does not mean we would be implementing a new bus network in January. It means we would start our, our hearing and board process in 2023. So there's, there's still the rest of this round of engagement and the next round of engagement to give input. And we anticipate having a sort of, whatever, what it means, a final decision towards the end of this year. Because even when we go live with the preferred option, we know there's going to be some changes that we have to make. So I, I wouldn't anticipate a final decision until the end of the year.
Thank you.
So I just wanted to clarify because I think I heard a couple of times something along the lines of like, the existing network will always be there. And I don't quite understand.
Yeah, sorry. What I mean is that it's always something that we have to keep in mind. It's not, not like it will always be operating. It's always something that we have to keep in mind when we make these changes. A lot of, you know, we have the two options that we've created now and then people are, you know, a lot of the feedback we're getting is really in relation to what we're changing of the current. We're always going to have to think about what the current network does and see if there's ways, see if there's things that we've missed or we need to put back in, in our final, in our network. That's what I meant. I'm sorry if I didn't explain. I'm sorry that I did.
I thought you were saying somehow the Route 44 was still going to be there.
No, no, no. And, and I want to, and I mean, this conversation is playing out all over the region. Like we are making, this is, this is not something we've ever done before. SEPTA has never done a comprehensive redesign before. But, you know, so we know that a lot of people have a lot of strong feelings about everything from what streets the route goes on to what number it is. And we're trying to balance all of these things because our, our, we feel like we have to make changes in our system. And so that's, that's what we're doing. But, but like I said, this is a very, this is a process that's going to play out very publicly and we are really trying to take this input into consideration. So, you know.
And just for Norbert folks listening to this conversation at this moment, how would they provide input?
Right. So there's lots of different ways. I would say the best way, because it's the easiest to aggregate, is to go to septabusrevolution.com and fill out a survey. It takes a few minutes. You'll have to walk through, you can walk through the two different network options. There's like a nice little narrative. So that's the best way to do it. If you don't want to do that, you can email theproject@septa, at, I'm going to stop sharing, I think. There we go. I'm going to stop sharing. And I'll put it in the chat, but you can, we have a project email address. And people can, people can send us emails and just say, I don't like this idea because of this, or this idea because of that. But, and that's, you know, busnetwork@septa.org or you can, you can email Wendy and Wendy can send it to me. But there's a lot of different ways to participate. And, and, but the, the website has a lot of good information on it. So it's sort of worth going to, just, just, you know, if you're interested.
I think to that point, do you have any suggestions? How can further reach, you know, the neighbors in your community? Do you have a municipal newsletter? Do you have like a social media presence? Like are there ways that we could help to, to get the word out? We would love, love your suggestions.
Yeah, that's exactly what I was going to say. Yeah, I would absolutely want this, you know, these outreach opportunities promoted weekly for a newsletter and on the website, on Facebook page. So I think Michelle Carroll from our office, who's been in touch with you all, coordinate with you all for any of that information. And we will absolutely get that out to the public in the brief way we can.
Thank you.
Yes, I've, I've been in touch with Michelle. So definitely willing to continue to work with her to get the information out to Norbert community. I also just wanted to briefly ask, does anyone know Dennis Manley? So he, he has led a group whose acronym is NICE. And they have done a tremendous, tremendous job of doing landscaping and beautification at the Norbert Regional Rail Station. So I just wanted to give him a, a tremendous compliment for all the work he's done. We've worked with him for a number of years. And by far, the Norbert Garden is one of the best in, in our whole network. So we appreciate that.
Thank you. We'll, we'll pass it along. We're delighted to hear that.
Thank you.
Sorry, just one more question and really coming with a lens for context of kind of transportation justice. Kelly, I, I thought you said that the bus, the percentage of decline of ridership on the bus was 20%. So my two questions is that, is that same 20% ridership decline seen on the R5 or the regional rail line? And then my next question is, what are the demographics of the riders? Do we see a different demographic on the bus versus the regional rail? Because honestly, that informs that survey I'm going to take. Who, who is accessing the different types of public transportation? And if we want to cut this short, that's fine, but I would ask perhaps that you follow up.
Yeah, I mean, I can talk about that a little bit. I mean, the demographics of the mo- of the modes is, is, is very different. The demographics of, of bus ri- bus riders tend to be lower income. Bus riders tend to be, you know, persons of color. Regional rail riders tend to be more affluent. I don't know, I don't work on regional rail, so I don't know what's going on ridership wise, but I think regional rail is, is still pretty down. Overall, I think a route like the 44 is a little different. It doesn't match the demographics to the rest of our bus system so much. It is typically more affluent and typically, you know, we have, there's fewer black riders, there's fewer, um, lower income riders, that kind of thing. So you know, it's, it's, we can do a little more digging and follow up, but generally speaking, like the, the ridership on the 44, like I said at the, like at the beginning, like the, the 44 in terms of like ridership patterns has typically always mirrored more like a regional rail service. It's always been very peak oriented, like six A, six to nine, you know, four to six. And there's always been really low weekend ridership, much, much lower than, than many routes that run at, at, at similar frequencies. I think there's a couple of reasons for that. I think one is, you know, the, the, you know, the, the R5 or the Paley Line, like has the best frequency of pretty much any regional rail line and the best ridership. So a lot of people are choosing regional rail and the, the bus and regional rail to some degree compete with each other for, for riders.
I appreciate that. Quite honestly, you just confirmed kind of anecdotally my own observations, but you know, I'm hesitant to cut a public transportation line that allows people of color from communities to come enjoy our shops, our restaurants. That adds a layer of consideration in my own assessment, which is why I just wanted to ask that question.
No, that, that's fair. That's a good observation. And maybe we're missing something in the data.
Yeah. And I just want to add two resources. And I, I see there isn't a chat, otherwise I would.
Yeah, I know.
I know, I was going to do that earlier with the feedback form. But the, someone pointed out the, the route profiles that are on the Bus Revolution website and we have the demographics for each route on there. And that's from our key cards that we were linking. So it doesn't represent 100% of the riders on that line because it doesn't include people who are paying cash. But we have demographics from, based on our, our SEPTA key. So that tells you about who's riding the 44. And then if you're interested in how our, in our ridership recovery on our planning.septa.org website, we have a really great dashboard that shows how our different, how ridership is coming back on our different modes. And that's updated each month. So that's. But yes, regional rail is much slower to.
Yeah.
Unless you think you have specific information relevant to Norbert or important to Norbert here, I think appreciate your, your time and answers to all of our questions. Thanks very much.
Fred, just real fast. I, I travel on Montgomery Avenue almost every day going to and from work and, and I gotta say, a loss of total service of the 44 line with no replacement, I think would really do a disservice to not a huge population, but you know, not insubstantial either. People who regularly stand at the, are standing at the corner waiting for the buses. And I just, I feel like that might be a, a significant loss. So.
I don't think anybody wants us to lose our public transportation service. We're all feeling the same thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks all, thanks for the time tonight and thanks for inviting us.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. We will now move to public comment. So let's start in the room. I'll point, if at the beginning you could just say your name and your address. So let's start it back.
Thank you. My name is Steve Menard. I live at 216 Sebine in Norbert. And thank you for the opportunity to address council. I've done so via Zoom over some meetings over the past few months. This is my first opportunity in person, so thank you. I wanted to reiterate a strong commitment of many in the community to maximize open space at the 201 Sebine property. I think that open green space is what would best serve the community. Mayor Deutsch earlier tonight referred to Norbert as an environmentally conscious community, which is absolutely right. And I think that currently, the green space in Norbert is a relatively low percentage of the entire area. And more green space would be environmentally conscious and serve to provide more open space opportunities for Norbert and near-birth residents. And I know that the preferences for park corner to corner, that certainly my preference. I understand there are proposals for a new building, once the old building is, is demolished. And if that is the route, I would only ask that the council consider that the footprint of any new building needs significantly less than what is currently there. So that would maximize green space. And I know that what I'm saying today is repetitive from, from things you've heard, meeting after meeting after meeting. And I apologize for what may be tedious to you, but I think it serves to show the importance of the issue and our commitment to the issue. And it's also important to note that I have not seen anyone stand up at these meetings and take a contrary position. I've heard people have different views on what may be included in new building, but no one's saying, no, we need less green space, we need more green space. And finally, I know that some of what I'm asking right now may be addressed later tonight. And I apologize, but this is my opportunity. I just want to pose some questions. I want to know if it is the council's intention to commit to maximize open space? And if there is new building, to make that relatively small, I would ask that if there is a new building, is it the council's intention to limit that to community services or perhaps childcare such as exists today? Rather than expanding to any more commercial use? So that's all I have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Colonel Reese Galen, 224 Sebine, I ask if I can speak without a mask because the ADA Act.
No. We're really asking people to keep their masks.
Ben, through the accommodations through ADA, if I don't wear a mask, my oxygen saturation drops.
That's not how that works, Karen. You're going to have to leave the meeting if you can't wear a mask.
Can I have time for my whole comment? It's a three minute comment, but oxygenation levels will may change tiny slightly.
We'll, we'll start your comment, we'll start your timer when you start to.
Okay. Today's topic I have is community engagement versus public comment. And engagement is a key term. Community members want to engage, talk, ask questions and have questions answered. We want to be validated and recognized. In 2019, 2020, there were over 200 people that attended community engagement meetings for 201 on Zoom and were able to share ideas and interact with council. What was the outcome of those meetings? Fast forwarding to 2022, council's pressing forward with plans for the second largest open space in Norbert without community engagement. You promised all the way that there'd be lots of meetings, nothing would happen without public interaction. And when I passed and asked if community engagement meetings would take place, we get no answers. Now, at the last meeting, last workshop meeting, Bob Weissworth said there are monthly meetings where people can talk. But speaking to the three minute timer is not an opportunity to have dialogue, to hear ideas, to exchange thoughts, plans, wishes. And when I tried to address a problem about the difference in public comment engagement, Freddie held her hand up and said, stop. Your time to speak is over, which is exactly my point. Do you want to have a dialogue with the community? Oh wait, you did have a dialogue with the community about the reimagination of station circle. You had three meetings about station circle, but isn't the future of our second largest open space as important as a train station? I know you've been receiving emails because we've been receiving emails in support. because we've been receiving emails in support of the park. Are you reading the emails? And are you going to read them in the public so people can hear the support that this community has for open space for a park at Sabine? I can read them, you can read them. The question I have is, when are you going to have community engagement meetings where a community can get together and speak to you, interact with you, get questions answered? Here what we have to say. Because if you're not willing to have these community meetings, go back to 201, it would be a really, really sad state of affairs. If the community had community meetings and invited you to that, who's going to take the leadership role? Are we going to take the leadership? Are we going to take the leadership role?
Thirty seconds.
Are you going to take the leadership role? Because speaking for 30 minutes, 33 minutes, is not engaging. And where does it go? Not really anywhere. National Park standards say a community with our size should have 39 acres of park, open space in park. We have eight. Norbert, you top green. We have a golden opportunity to make Sabine a park from corner to corner, increasing our green space.
Thank you, Carol.
For the community, for the future of Norbert.
Thank you, Carol.
So no development on Sabine.
Yes.
I'll refer to the end and let...
No, that's not all.
I prefer to go with Mark.
Okay.
Great.
Let me pull it up.
Okay. Dennis Allen, 27, Norbert Park. I'm making a statement on behalf of the Parks and Recreation Board.
If you could speak up a little.
I'm making a statement on behalf of the Parks and Recreation Board, which I am a member of. Although the Norbert Parks and Recreation Board advocates for additional recreational outlets for all Norbert residents, the Norbert Parks and Recreation Board does not recommend that Norbert Borough move forward with the skate park pilot program at this time. We thank the Borough Manager for responding to our questions, but without any assurances that we're to safety and maintenance measures will be implemented for the pilot program. The Parks and Recreation Board is unable to approve this project. We do strongly urge Norbert Borough Council to seek a legal opinion from the Borough Solicitor about the insurance policy, failures on site that may lead to a lack of coverage, and potential negligence claims that may affect Norbert Borough, council members, and taxpayers. If you do choose to proceed, we also recommend that the Borough Council consult the skate park expert for feature placement and installation to ensure a safe experience for skaters of all ages. Members of the Parks and Recreation Board will not be present at these meetings as we plan to address other park businesses. Thank you, Parks and Recreation Board. Now, as a fellow resident, I agree with previous statements. And while it's great that we do have that resolution that we cast two years ago to preserve the open space, that is not legally binding. So I just urge whatever community vision the Borough Council proceeds with, that you look for opportunities to increase open space. Next.
Thank you. Yes.
I'm gonna echo some of the comments made already in regards to, I'm sorry, Jim Spear, 321 Garland, Norbert. I'm gonna echo some of the comments made already in support of increasing green space at 201 Sabine, and particularly in favor of tearing down the existing building and realizing a green park from corner to corner, I think is very realistic. We got the opportunity to more than double or even triple our green space at 201 Sabine. At the same time, the community engagement surveys of 2020 and 2021 identify lots of variety of community interests and things and activities and amenities that might happen at 201 Sabine. Top response independently was for childcare, for instance. There was also mentioned a home for the food bank, a home for the theater. People even mentioned pools, the community pool, all things that don't necessarily fall under the heading of green open space. I think there's more than room in that block to realize a corner to corner park, and also a smaller building. As I think Mr. Menard, I think?
Yes.
Sorry. That sounded great to me. As long as that footprint is, it seems like it could be a lot smaller than what it is now. So I urge council and residents to refresh themselves with the results of the survey. There were more than 435 responses, which is significant. Represents significant.
Next. Do you have a comment?
Hi. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Karen Callamy. My address is 231 Wayne Avenue, and I'm a layhome Norbert resident, Jennifer North. I've never attended nor publicly spoken at a borough meeting, but the future of 201 Sabine is near and dear to my heart. Open space is at a premium in our densely populated Norbert. It's a rare commodity that we can't afford to offer to developers, including to not only save the park, but to expand it to include all three 7 acres from corner to corner, to preserve and protect all of Norbert's parks from any topment. So the existing park includes a sloped perimeter with matured cherry trees. They absorb much of the noise and pollution from Montgomery Avenue's traffic, provides a beautiful visual screen from the vehicles that went by. Growing up in the 200th block of Woodbine Avenue, my sister and I didn't have much of a backyard behind our row house, nor did anyone else in our neighborhood of Woodbine, Camden, Iona Avenues. But not having a grassy backyard to play in didn't deny us of any of the fun or put us in harm's way because we had a sacred public place to play nearby, the parking grounds of former Norbert School. We could walk there to have a catch, play on swings. You can have a picnic only blocks from home. Fast forwarding, several decades, my own daughters experienced being, doing it, playing at Sabine Park. And the best part is that it's not just for children. Young and old can be seen doing yoga, participating in other fitness activities outdoors, sitting on benches to enjoy a middle of the day break from the indoors, and community gardens for residents, regardless of how much or little land that they own, to enjoy gardening, share that passion with others, grow fresh produce for themselves, give to others. So having Sabine Park and Norbert Park in the borough is one of the reasons why Norbert, like myself, chose to reside in Norbert as adults. Please think about the future of Norbert when making your decisions about 201 Sabine. Preserve and protect this essential, irreplaceable green space for future generations of Norberts. Thank you very much. Your turn.
Thank you.
No comment. I'm not a resident.
Yep.
Hello. My name is Peter Crowe. I'm a retired science teacher, and I live at 25. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. Along with Jim, I planted trees and dug tree holes in Norbert and looked after the corner by the building for some years. And I've been working for two or three years on a stream restoration project in Norbert. And I wanted to commend the councils for working with Lot 3 Elmwood. That's an amazing thing that you are really considering for preserving there. As for 101 Sabine, I think once again, you are presented with an historic moment. And you are presented with a wonderful opportunity. Well, Mr. Shand, he was the original owner of that piece of land. Whether sold or gave it to the borough, I don't know which. If he were alive, I am certain that he would vote for the preservation of the entire corner to corner, 3.9 acre Sabine parcel. Because it was this same Alexander Shand who in 1926, and I learned this from Vicky Donoghue's History of Norbert, saw and grabbed the opportunity to secure the Norbert sports field, when to all intents and purposes, it looked to the whole world, that that field would have become a railway depot. You heard earlier, there are over 5,000 residents in Norbert, and that number is growing. Numerous studies have shown that communities of that size should have close to 40 acres of open space, and we have eight. A park, a playground, a natural area, a mini nature preserve with a trail, some trees, some wildflowers, and this right in our borough?
Thirty seconds.
Incredible. Please seize the opportunity. Yes, there will be expenses to the borough, but when the dust has settled, you will all be remembered and honored for generations to come. Thank you very much.
Okay, let's move on.
Sure. So for people on Zoom, I currently have everyone muted. So if you just use the raise hand function on Zoom, or turn your video on and literally raise your hand, I'll call on you, and then you'll see a prompt on your screen where you can unmute yourself and make comment. All right, looks like our first person is Lisa Saltzner.
Hi, I just wanted to echo our very eloquent neighbor who just spoke to say that I do think that this is a remarkable opportunity to save and preserve green space in Norbert. I, two years ago, at the community meetings that we had over the fall of 2020, was quite committed to the notion of preserving the building itself, doing the deferred maintenance on it, because I also thought that the food bank and the daycare were enterprises that we should support and were for the good of the community. But it sounds as if that is an ever evaporating possibility. So if the town, if the borough is no longer committed to thinking creatively in the way that Gigi, for example, proposed last month at the meeting about ways of partnering, getting federal funds, finding ways to maintain, reimagine that smaller footprint of the building as a site for the kind of services that are there, I think if that is not a possibility, then the entire space should be reimagined as green space for the good of the community. And I'm strongly in opposition to any development, particularly of more condos or apartments and so forth, in a town that doesn't need that and actually needs, or a borough that doesn't need that and actually does need green space. So I wanted to register my opposition to development, my sadness that it seems we've let go of the possibility of finding a way to preserve the functions of the food bank and the childcare, but I support green space. Thank you.
I think it's Mary Kay Hamburger. Do you still want to make a comment?
Or, I'm sorry, just a quick comment. Hi, I'm Mary Kay Hamburger. I live in Bryn Mar, but I lived on the 300 block of North Essex for quite some time. I'm the board member still of the Norbert Improvement and Cleanup Endeavor. And I just, congruent with Miss Wendy's comment when she presented for SEPTA, you know, the NICE, the Norbert Improvement and Cleanup Endeavor is still working. We're in our 55th year in the borough, doing cleanup and projects. And I just wanted to say thanks back to, I know they probably got off the call, but the folks from SEPTA have been great partners to NICE, and are so wonderful to deal with when we're doing projects at the train station. But if anybody in the public or in Norbert, or that, anybody that lives nearby wants to get involved, just drop a line to nice.norbert@gmail.com, and love to have you volunteer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Kay.
Yep.
All right, I do not see anyone that wants on Zoom who's indicated they'd like to speak.
All right.
Um, before we go on, Samantha, I believe, Carol Ryan Slama, have a hand up.
I didn't, Mayor, I didn't see that. She wants to raise her hand again.
On my screen, it was just showing a hand up.
Ms. Slama, do you have a?
No, no comment.
All right, thank you. Okay, let's move on to the gym, item 10, which is the consent agenda.
To the Borough Council, proof of SEPTA just came up.
Sir, second.
Second.
A lot of seconds. You gotta hear a call first. Next to me. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, raise your hands. Okay. Okay. Next item is a public hearing.
I guess we'll adjourn the meeting into this public hearing, which is on proposal ordinance amending the Norbert Borough Zone, create the Norbert Historic District overlay, and fulfilling what has been discussed previously as the infill ordinance to allow for multiple principal dwellings on a property through conditional use approval, and creating different building types, including the college building type. I have a number of exhibits I will mark as this is a zoning ordinance amendment. First will be 40 Exhibit 1, which is the ordinance in consideration for approval at tonight's hearing. 40 Exhibit 2 is the legal notice for tonight's hearing. 40 Exhibit 3 is the proof of publication in the Mainline Times, which was published on May 1st and May 8th, 2022, with that legal notice for tonight's hearing. 40 Exhibit 4 is the proof of submission to the Montgomery County Law Library of the proposal ordinance, which was marked received by them on May 3rd, 2022, and available for public inspection. 40 Exhibit 5 is the proof of submission and subsequent review by the Montgomery County Planning Commission, which was submitted to them on April 13th, 2022. 40 Exhibit 6 is the proof of submission to the Norbert Planning Commission, which was submitted on April 13th, 2022. And that is the most recent version. It was submitted previously on prior editions and discussed by the commission on February 17th. And there is a review letter for that, and then also again on May 5th, but the submission was on April 13th. 40 Exhibit 7 is the proof of posting of the legal notice at 10 conspicuous locations throughout the borough and around borough that would be impacted by this zoning change, as it is a zoning overlay, which mimics the current history. Normally, that isn't something that is done before the ordinance hearing, but since there is a map amendment as well, and it's a comprehensive map amendment, there are required to be postings of the areas that would be impacted by that map amendment. So those are the seven exhibits that are marked up, or marked and will be admitted for tonight's hearing, part of the record as the issue arrives. With that, I will turn it over to the public to see if there's any numbers of the public, either in person or online, that want to provide comments on this ordinance specifically. Is there anybody in the room? See none in the room? Any online?
No one on Zoom. If you'd like to make a comment in regards to the proposed ordinance, same procedure as before, please raise your hand physically or digitally. No one on Zoom. How is the hand raised?
This ordinance was discussed last month when it was motioned for advertised. A lot of credit does go to the Norbert Planning Commission. I do see Mr. Spear in the room today. We provide a lot of work and planning, as this is a pretty planning-heavy ordinance. It is a pretty, fair to say, a unique ordinance, a progressive ordinance, but it is an idea of preserving the historic resources, but still allowing that properties to be used productively. It will provide different options for the borough's consideration and review of land development projects, and provide for a smaller opportunity, for smaller constructions of the borough through that being called cottage building. through that being called cottage building type. Does council have any questions or comments regarding the ordinance?
So there have been a lot of sort of questions from the public about some of the details about this, so hoping, assuming that sort of past week, and create a short summary and with online, so people are aware of what their, what the options are of this. At least make it available, so that, I don't know, but I mean, I think we need a quick summary because people are going to keep asking.
Sure.
I would say that's something, I'll admit, I'm not sure if that's the best approach, but if the majority of council wants us to do that, then I'll do that. I just think so many questions are going to be so specific to each property that I don't know if a general summary would be more harm than good. I do think that, and I'm really grateful to the members of council who've handled some of these public comments, as well as our Planning Commission Chair, Mr. Rossi, but I think that once council approves this ordinance, like we do with any other kind of zoning question, that our zoning officer, Mr. Kevin Walsh, should like answer people's questions on a case-by-case basis, to ensure they're getting the best information.
And I would also say that the approval of any development will be done most likely through a conditional use hearing, historic resource on that, right? So that would be another opportunity for council and the public to be involved in that property discussion if there was an application set forward, and that would obviously be advertised as well for the public to know. But I think the important thing to keep in mind is that this was carefully crafted in a way to affect properties that have significant land, yet a historic resource already on it, large enough where there could potentially be development, particularly if someone wanted to tear down that historic resource and put multiple new dwellings on that property. The intent is to preserve the existing resource, but still allow the existing properties to be developed in a way that isn't too crowded, providing for smaller structures in that, providing for proper setbacks, and providing for proper street skates to keep that feel along the street while also maintaining the active historic resource in a historically, let's put it, historic integrity. But it isn't a situation where anyone can tear down their house and build five houses on their lot because of, that's what the ordinance sets, multiple principal dwellings. The intent is to keep that historic resource, but there are still setbacks in lots with requirements and the other requirements for this underlying going districts. And it does apply to 3A, 3B, and 3ZC, zoning districts, heading over.
Thanks for the summary. Any other questions?
If there are no other questions from public or from council, we will close this public hearing on the proposed infill development ordinance and map amendment. This ordinance is now in a position for council for consideration, and we will re-turn back into the public meeting and continue with the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. All right, the next item on the agenda is 12A, which is infill development.
I move the Borough Council, that ordinance, 1045, for infill development.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Is there discussion? We've just got to create summary here.
I've been saying the same thing every meeting, I'm just going to give one more, two sentences, how Mary pitched, that I think we've heard a lot of support from the community about transit ring density. I have not had any community members say, we're looking for interior density. I still hold that lawns and yards are public commodity and are valuable to everyone in that interior neighborhood, and that we're solving a problem that I don't think we quite yet have. I continue to ask this, if anyone comes and said, you really tied my hand to the historical preservation ordinance, my plan was to do this, and now I can't. The answer was no. So I continue to think that we should, we should pause this until we have seen how historical preservation has played out, and we've had neighbors tell us, we're looking for interior density, because I haven't heard that.
But there is an example, that's what inspired this whole play.
I wouldn't do a ordinance for lawn.
Well, you said there were no examples, and there is.
I mean, I would say, Cindy, the number we were considering the historic preservation ordinance, the number of people did make the case that they, you know, wanted to develop their house, and they were going to lose the ability to develop their house the way they wanted to. There were multiple people who made that argument. So I don't think it's novel. I think people have been complaining about it since we brought up the ordinance.
Basically, what this does is restore a right these people had before the historic district ordinance was put into place. This is, I asked Tom that question very directly, the Chair of the Planning Commission, because I really wanted to understand, this is a new thing, and I was like, really, no. With the historic district ordinance, it kind of limited what you could do if you had that really large lot. And so, and that was an unintended consequence of the historic district ordinance. This is just restoring a right they had before, and I totally resonate with your wish for green lawns or wooded meadow land or whatever, but I don't feel like I can say to a fellow homeowner in the borough, I'm sorry, you can't develop your property the way you want to because I want you to maintain that green space for me or for the borough. That just feels like I'm taking too much from them. So I'm comfortable with this because it isn't giving something new, it's restoring something that we unintentionally took away.
A technical question for the Buris Lister. Would our, I mean, our existing impervious surface and building cover percentages would be the same either way, correct?
Correct. I don't believe they're impacted by this ordinance.
Yeah, but there's another thing, I think that when we first saw this, it was a little bit more pervasive, and we discussed with the Planning Commission, and they narrowed it to this particular set that's here. So it wasn't, you know, it wasn't just like, we had input across, I think, so it was compromised.
Yeah, no, I appreciate all of your opinions. Appreciate yours too. Yeah, yes, exactly.
Is there any other discussion? Okay, we're voting on the ordinance for infill development. All those in favor, please raise your hands. All those opposed, motion passes, six to one. 12B. Okay, so this, we should open the discussion. This is the three home.
So it's me again. Okay. I move the Borough Council, Dr. Resolution 2022, 13, for agreement of sale for the three home.
Second? Correct. Samantha or John?
Actually, John.
I'm happy to jump in. This resolution is not going to be, it's not in a position for council support, right? So I would recommend that council table this ordinance to the June Business Council meeting. That is not because of any hardships or animosities or changes, of course, on this matter. Everything is staying the same. I think it's just a matter of going back and forth with the other party, the selling party, that the selling party still needs to figure out some issues on their end regarding some timing. So everything that has been discussed previously is still moving in that direction. See the original first draft for this agreement of sale, which was posted. You can see that that was not done, it was still a draft, and it still remains in that draft form. The borough is waiting to hear back comments from the sellers and their attorney. We expect to get that back within a term, so it should be well within a position if it is able to be proceeded with at that June meeting. By tabling it, it would appear on the agenda at the next meeting automatically.
I would notably table considerations, Resolution 2022, 15.
So a second? Okay, all those in favor, special favor table? Special favor discussion? Okay, motion is tabled. Sorry. Some of these users know this discussion.
Yeah, exactly. We don't need to talk about that.
All right, 12C.
I move that council advertise the ordinance for municipal towing and municipal owned parking.
Second? Second about, all right, discussion.
Solicitor Walco or Andrew Ryan, would one of you like to?
Sure. So the goal of this ordinance is, you know, even just the year that I've been here, a little bit of a bugaboo, and I'm sure for many people in the community on council, it's probably been one for even longer, and it's right now with our borough parking lots here at 100 Conway and a 201 Sabine, parking is kind of a free-wheel situation, and the borough really has no control over it. And unfortunately, that's led to a situation where people have realized this and have been encouraged to basically just leave vehicles indefinitely in our parking areas. And the real challenge with that is it denies the public access to those parking areas, especially here at the parking lot at 100 Conway, which services this building, our park, our library, our other communities faces at AD Windsor. And so my goal with this ordinance, and I really appreciate all the feedback and development from the ad hoc parking committee and from Solicitor Walco and from Chief Gallagher on this, is to give the borough a mechanism to do something about it, and this ordinance will give us the power, you know, to take it and tow if people are in violation of this ordinance. In addition, it would give council the option, if it's so desired, to create some sort of permit program for long-term parking, most notably a 201 Sabine that currently is what appears to be excess parking. So if council wanted to move in that direction, we'll allow some kind of permit parking there, this ordinance will give us the option to. It's not saying that we would have to, but it would give us that option. But the most important part is it would give the borough the power to get rid of any, you know, vehicles that have, you know, been parked in our public parking lots in ways that they shouldn't be.
I guess the other thing I would say too is that it puts rules around how towing can be done in the borough. Apparently, we didn't have any of that really codified.
Not codified. So it is an extensive provision related to towing. It is something that is also, that they have in Lower Marion, Haverford, some of our neighboring municipalities, but it's necessary in order to provide assurances that if the borough is arranging for towing and storing, that we have the right companies, so we're taking that for the public's benefit. And when that is done, should not be anything different than what the police are doing right now for abandoned vehicles or wrecked vehicles or vehicles that are posing a public safety. We're just trying to make sure that we know who is towing, where your vehicles are, and that those are the right companies.
I would make a really important clarification for the public. This would only impact borough towing services. So if you have your own accord, maybe a tower, so you just kind of, you know, do whatever you want. These regulations are only for towers providing service to the borough.
Sorry, thank you.
Any other questions or discussion?
Happy to see this broadly coming to pass.
Yeah, I think it's always embarrassing to walk by and see this, and I know members of the public have spoken out as well, so it would be good to deal with these high source. Okay, so the motion is to advertise, oh, sorry, the motion is, yeah, to advertise the ordinance for municipal towing and municipal owned parking. All those in favor? Okay, next is building codes.
I move that Borough Council approve advertisement ordinance to update building codes from 2015 to 2018.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
I would just share that this came out of our committee because we were looking for ways to strengthen green standards within new construction. And there are some green codes that are really progressive, but we're not permitted, in my understanding, to adopt those because they exceed what the state would allow. So I think this is what we can do.
And this is what's recommended and should be required for all municipalities. The background of it is that the majority of municipalities in Pennsylvania have opted into adopting the Pennsylvania Uniform Construction Code. There are some changes here or there. Narberth Borough has done that, and when you do that, you cannot exceed those requirements that have been approved pursuant to the Construction Code Act of Pennsylvania. Previously, Pennsylvania has adopted 2015 Uniform Construction Codes, and at that point in time, Narberth Borough and all municipalities adopted 2015 codes, maybe some different codes, because there's a number of construction codes out there, you know, the electricity codes, the Wildland and Herbin Interface Code, the gas, fuel gas code, funding code, all these different codes. It's now recommended to do the 2018, and we're going to adopt 2018 if council sees fit. That is the recommendation of the fire marshal and the building inspector, and then what's being done to buildings as well. So simply just updates 2015, 2018, and any standards that have changed in the interim on these codes.
Through the discussion? Okay, the motion is to advertise ordinance to update Narberth building codes from 2015 to 2018. All those in favor? Okay, next. All right, 12E, skate park.
I move the Borough Council approves final rules for the skate park pilot, approves the proposed layout for the skate park pilot, approves maintenance and operations plan as a packet for the skate park pilot, approves the opening date and a marketing plan for the skate park pilot, and approves the skate park survey.
Is there a second?
A second?
Yeah, discussion. So, Samantha?
So I organized the agenda the way I did to maybe take this discussion in manageable chunks. So the first item that council needs to consider are the rules for the skate park. So I took the discussion from council at our last meeting and updated the rules to reflect that. I added the park hours that we talked about. I think there was some discussion about not having people use the area when there's inclement weather, so I added language about not to use it for ice or sweat out. And then finally, I added language to it, what was the third one we talked about? I added one other additional rule to.
Was it, you can't move the structures?
Move the, thank you, Mayor, that you can't move the equipment. And I did a change to the extra shirt, and we already have the Radnor rules. I also got the ASTM, Lawless Skate Park Rules, and so I looked at those, and our rules are pretty consistent with those as well. So that is where the rules that you have before you came from.
Mine's would be the ASTM.
All the way.
Sorry, quick.
It's in the memo.
Testing, man, you're correct.
American Society for Testing and Materials.
These are safety.
Yes.
Okay. So you might have any comments about the rules?
Well, I mean, one of the rules I believe is in, I'm sorry if I don't remember exactly, but basically the borough has the right to, you know, close the park at any moment.
Yeah, that was another change.
If it's deemed, that gives us, if there's some unexpected circumstance going on, we don't have to say, well, you know, it wasn't I, they could say, it wasn't I, see, well, we don't have to say we're closing it.
Yeah, originally, that language was listed some specific reasons why we might close it, and then I remember council had said, instead of saying specific reasons, just say we can close it whenever we want.
Because it is a pilot, so it's hard to predict, for example, what's going to happen.
I don't see any other.
Well, I mean, if it was about that, but you.
Yeah, we'll move on to the next topic. Let's see any other concerns about the rules. So let's move to the layout.
Sure. So updated, included in the packet on Monday afternoon is the proposed layout. Myself and council vice president and our public works manager had an opportunity to chat further with Jesse Clayton and Mr. David Rodeau about some of the layout. I have a lot of thanks to our vice president, who introduced me to SketchUp, which was used to make this 3D model. We got a little bit of a chicken and egg where, understandably, well, public works was concerned about assembling the equipment, then having to move it, and Mr. Clayton was concerned about, you know, not being able to see the equipment set up and make a recommendation on its location. So in SketchUp. So in SketchUp, we made, well, not we, to be fair, our council vice president made an exact replica of the court and the equipment, and we were able to work with Mr. Clayton and the others on the call to design the layout that was, you know, determined here. In addition, again, I looked at the ASTM, you know, regulations on various things about how the equipment should work that I referenced in the memo to council, and this layout is compliant with the ASTM recommendations as well as the advice from Mr. Clayton. So I just wanted to check and see here tonight, we do have to submit this layout to our liability insurer and our workers' comp insurer for approval as well, but I needed council's approval according to that.
Just to clarify that a bit, so we've checked with the safety standards from the ASTM. We've consulted with a professional designer of skate parks on the layout, and we're furthermore going to have this looked at by our insurance companies, all of which will make sure that it's safe.
Yes.
So accurate.
And that will include an onsite inspection as well.
Okay.
Well, I appreciate you saying I've been on council to look at this, just to kind of underscore the list you just rattled off. I don't want to suggest it's not even appropriate for council to comment on the placement of that, because you just listed all the experts that signed off safety. I mean, I know, I certainly don't have some safety standards.
We're signing off a few steps for checking.
Well, I'm going to say thank you for checking all those boxes, and I certainly don't have the expertise to comment.
Me either.
So I just wanted to emphasize the point that we're not going to, even though we may vote for this tonight, we're not going to open the park until we have that insurance inspection after the equipment is put in place, right? Because.
Yeah, I was going to talk a little more about that. Yeah.
Okay, well, then I can wait.
Okay. Any other comments on the skate park? Leo? All right. And thanks for, again, for all the work with the 3D inventory. Definitely, I think, made it a lot easier than other segments. Okay. Maintenance and operation.
Sure. So in the memo, again, I provided some information on that. I borrowed a lot admittedly from the memo that our council vice president and chair of infrastructure committee provided previously that goes through the pains we have taken to ensure a safe environment for the skate park. The work that's been done so far will be done prior to opening to ensure a safe equipment and safe surface for the skate park. And then there's also a plan in the memo for weekly inspection by our public works team to ensure that the equipment and the surface remains in a condition that's safe and usable for participants of the skate park. And again, this plan is going to have to be reviewed and approved by our liability and workers' comp insurers.
And if I could speak up, that has the borough's list, or it'd be my opinion that as long as the liability insurers are okay with that plan, and obviously the borough sticks to that plan, there should be no liability issues with the borough.
Okay. Any other discussion on this? All right. Since there's any questions.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. That was one of the questions, do you approve? And I just heard you saying you approve.
Again, it's, yes, I mean, as long as it's done.
Yes.
The plan, and the liability carrier there, you know, then at that point, it's no different than the playground.
Sure.
You can get hurt on the playground, and if you don't maintain playground equipment correctly, that's an issue. I see no difference between them.
That's actually kind of an important point.
Go. All right, opening date and marketing plan.
So originally, an opening date of May 27th was discussed. Well, I certainly think the equipment and the surface could be prepared by that time. I can't, I'm not going to say that we can't do it, but I can guarantee that our insurer will have the opportunity to do the inspection prior to that date and then secure the underwriting for the coverage. So I do think that we may want to consider pushing that out to June, that Friday, June 3rd, in order to ensure that those coverages, ensure that, you know, again, that we've done everything we need to do for safety and maintenance, and then we have that coverage in place before we open it up to the public.
Okay. Other events, March 4th?
No.
Okay, there's next week's events, okay.
And that might work out better too, in the sense of who knows how many people will be away for Memorial Day weekend and that sort of thing.
Yeah, that's good.
All right, does anyone have objections to moving the date?
No, no, no.
All right, do you have other comment?
Well, yeah, about this, I mean, I think that, like, this is, as you, yeah, this is a critical piece. We have to have, I think it was like, it was actually somewhat of, we didn't think, we realized like, that actually, we want this inspected after it's in place, not like, I mean, with all due respect to your SketchUp, not of the drawing or, you know, looking at the equipment, but actually with the stuff in place, because then they're really evaluating the actual, you know, layout that we have, the dimensions, the way they fixed up the concrete, all that stuff, they can look at it all in place before we, just like before you would open a building, you know, you have an inspection before you open it with everything done, not, they don't inspect, of course, they also look at the drawings, but now they're really looking at, so I think that's critical. I mean, anything we do has to be contingent, of course, on that.
And in terms of the marketing plan, I want to just give a thanks to Harry Quay, who's had a lot of great ideas on that already, that he's sent to myself and a couple other folks. And again, I think it's something where, you know, any outside support the borough can get in promoting it, I'm certainly very grateful and happy to have. So, I mean, if council is comfortable with some of that work being outsourced to members of the community, I think that would be to the good of everyone.
I mean, I don't know, I don't know if we're going to end up with, like, signs everywhere and stickers everywhere, because I know some people are very enthusiastic and they have stickers already, so we may want to make a suggestion about that if we don't want the stickers everywhere.
Yeah, I think it's somewhere I would still have some oversight over it. It's just, you know, I wouldn't have to, myself and Verdo wouldn't actually have to physically do it, yeah. I think it'd all have to be pre-approved by myself before anything was done.
All right. Sounds great, it's great that we have enthusiastic support from the community.
All right, and then the last item that I prepared here, and keep in mind, I'm not, I've never skateboarded in my life, so the survey here just comes from the perspective of someone who's imagining what someone's skateboarding might want to tell us about the pilot. So I did send it as well to Mr. Verdo for comment. I don't think he's had an opportunity to provide that comment yet. If there's any perspectives or advice from members of council about any possible changes to the survey, you know, I'm certainly open to that. And again, it's something that I would want to do, have ready as soon as opening day for it. And again, it'd be something where we would have a QR code as well as a link for people, you know, posted around the skate park along the rules, so that people could just very easily, while they're at the skate park, could do it.
So my recommendation would be to include an email address, just to, you know, make it so that you make one submission, otherwise you open yourself up to a lot of the same person.
I, well, yes, we will do that. Also, we'll notice, having done a lot of online surveys in other places before, something I will share, and I think it's good for the public to know this, as well as council, one of the other tools at our disposal is collecting the IP addresses of anyone who submits a survey response. Now, that's not foolproof, because if someone's on a cell phone, their service has different IP addresses, but you can, there's a lot of ways we can figure out if people are stuffing the box, so to say.
All right. Trust you to take care of that. Any other comments on the survey? All right, that's everything on our skate park list. So are there any other comments or things that we haven't addressed? So.
I'm sorry, is there some place where, I should know this, but this is a member of the committee, but what the length of the pilot is?
We haven't, we haven't really specified that.
I think we should probably do that.
I think, we had a discussion earlier, we envisioned starting earlier in the year originally. We had envisioned probably being further along our master parks plan.
Maybe till the savings times ends or something like that.
I mean, for this year.
For this year.
I mean, you don't mean like, the lock the park up and making it accessible for the year, like.
But like, when is this, when are we going to, is this, this was a pilot, right?
Yeah. In theory, it could, it could pick up again next spring, depending on how master parks planning is going, I have no idea.
Okay, so we asked a question again, and when would it close in the fall?
Right, that's, so that's what you're getting at. Yeah, I don't know. I mean, I would think I would ask, I mean, I would honestly just ask our skateboarding community when, when, you know, when.
Nothing else you can say. Of course, they're changing that, but like, right now, when deal at savings times.
Is the date on that?
So, may I make this objection? As a council member, I would be comfortable if the infrastructure committee wants to just be monitoring the situation and then make a recommendation to council if it's time to close the pilot, or if it's, or, you know, if it's going well, just.
So we don't have to decide right now.
Well, that way, the, I mean, the committee can just kind of, that's my recommendation, is the committee will just watch to monitor its use and appropriateness.
That's fair.
Yeah, that's, yeah, I would say, you know, the deference to our infrastructure chair, we do have an existing spot on the agenda for borough projects, and it's my intention that the skate park would be one of the listed borough projects that I would report monthly onto the infrastructure committee.
I just tend to avoid surprises where someone expected it to stay open and then we closed it, but, you know.
I think.
The topic's the way, we don't have to.
Yeah, I think the general expectation is we have to learn about it, as you say, but let's, let's see what happens.
Okay.
All right, any other general discussion items on the skate park? All right, so we have a motion to, for final rule, maintenance and operation plan, opening date and marketing plan, and skate park survey to approve all of those.
Opening date, June 3rd, but all of it will be contingent and approved by the written documents as well as the final inspection of the park as installed.
Thank you for the clarification. All those in favor of approving skate park, those developments? Skate park pilots, okay.
I just want to make a general comment following the, just that, this is a rare kind of project, at least it's rare in my experience, living as a resident or whatever, to see a project like this, kind of emerged out of like, the neighborhood itself and like, out of discussions that went on for many, many, many years. I know that going, even going back into the early 2000s, maybe into the late 90s, that people had wanted the skate park, and that idea persisted for a long time. And then, and then through, like, the effort of a lot of volunteer residents, the equipment appeared, the rod, the park, park wrecked form, like, asked the council to consider it.
I'm going to give a shout out to Mary Kay.
And to Mary Kay.
She actually brought.
To Mary Kay who brought the idea originally, and it kind of became reality. And I just think, and through, hand over hand, a lot of people's hands have touched this and helped and made it possible, and obviously, most recently, our borough manager. But I just think it's a pretty extraordinary accomplishment, and I just swear, you know, I'm proud of the council for being able to make it happen. It's sick, yeah, it's crazy.
It shouldn't be lost on anybody who doesn't know, but that was, his name is Henry?
Henry.
Yeah, Harry is 12 years old.
I know.
Oh, it's a 12-year-old kid.
Yeah, I thought Harry was a 50-year-old resident because Harry had done due diligence, Harry had, that's right. David Verdo said, well, I don't know if Harry can come to this. I said, well, what do you mean? He's 12. I thought he was retired. He had, and David Verdo will credit him, but amazing.
Wow, that's so cool.
Yeah, all right.
Love it, love it.
All right, that's all of our action items. The information items, the reports have been filed. Do you want to give us the bridge updates?
Yeah, I guess I'm happy to answer questions about the reports, although I wasn't prepared to speak on them.
Let me just thank you for what you're doing to keep this all right. You're doing a lot, and, you know, it's not, I know it's not pleasant for you, so thank you.
But I mean, I think, I think it was clear from your latest memo that, like, Panoni is aware of that, like, we're not like, we're not thrilled with the progress.
Yeah, so I guess what I, and it's like, I had a meeting with our bridge engineer and the borough engineer last Friday to emphasize that, you know, delays, any further delays on the project are not going to be tolerated by Borough Council. The good news is we're still, or at least in my opinion, I'm going to recommend the Borough Council, they're not going to be tolerated. And right now, the lead date is still December 6th, December 7th, I believe, and I have assurances from Panoni that that date is not going to change. And, you know, told them that that is very important to myself, and I'm sure it's important to council as well.
Sorry to put you on the spot, but I felt that, that was.
Yeah.
Reiterating, December 7th is my birthday, so I'm really.
Don't expect personally meaningful to me.
I'll take it personally if it's not.
Don't expect actual construction just for.
No.
We have two relatively major milestones coming up. So in three weeks, Panoni is supposed to submit the final design plan to PennDOT for review, and then at next week's infrastructure committee meeting, we're going to start the process to select a construction inspector for the project, so.
Okay, so we do have some, we do still have some business, so for new business, we have.
I'm sorry, I have a question about information items?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, I'm sorry, I saw Mr. Ellen's public work report that Public Works responded after hours to a sewer line block that was caused by cooking grease. I suppose this is more of an FNA question, and I'm wondering if the person poured the cooking grease down reimbursed the borough for those after hours of thankfully they were able to unplug that line?
They did not. That is not, not usually how that sort of thing works, but I would say they did not. I'll also note that it was a, it was a residential property where this occurred.
So we should probably do some public education that you don't pour cooking grease. I bring back my feet to my board. No, I got it. It's just my moment. I just, I tried to do the borough program like four years ago. I have a five-gallon jug of used rod that I don't. Okay, because now you can tell. All right, all right, thank you.
Totally appropriate to discuss the monthly reports. Any other? See, no further discussion on monthly reports. Let's move to the 201 crailing, so carrying board application.
Yeah, so at least my recommendation on this one is that I think this is one where I, I mean, I totally trust there's any carrying board on any application, but I think this is one where I think can solely be plucked to them, and I don't think they need any input from Borough Council on this one.
Okay, so we have Borough Council. All right, I see no disagreement at council. All right, whole business, we have 201 Sabines, updates.
Sure, so I don't, I don't have a ton to lend you to share, but I do have one good piece, you know, one important thing to share. So I had an opportunity to chat with HR and A all the other day, and I think they might be someone who could provide a scope of services that might be realistic for Borough Council to consider. So they've been asked to draft up a scope for, for, you know, the request we have out there for option four. Once they have that, and I have an opportunity to review it, and everything kind of seems appropriate there, we'll have them come and speak to Borough Council, and once they've done that, you'll see presentations from HRT, you know, not directly related to 201 Sabine, but in the past, you've had a chance to hear from them, you've heard from the county redevelopment authority, and I hope that after. And I hope that after hearing from HRA, council will have a better sense of how or if at once, you know, to pursue anything regarding option four. The other thing I'll note is I did look at what some other values and try to do with similar projects and what sort of planner they've used. And, you know, looking at those firms, I didn't think they would be the right fit for this project. But, you know, as I said, once we get the proposal from HRA, council would have three firms to consider working with to do a non-binding RFP for the property. And I would recommend in favor of doing it, just so we at least know what our options are. And that way, when council does, you know, have to make a definitive decision on the property, you'll know what you're actually deciding between, because option four to me feels, you know, still feels very much kind of like a mystery door of sorts. Within the parameters, I do want to emphasize, you know, of the resolution council passed where, even under option four, the existing open space would remain the same or would be expanded. And I think, you know, I think there is a lot of opportunity even under option four, for the open space to be expanded. But again, those are things we won't know for sure unless we work with someone to, you know, help us fill in that information gap.
So I just would like to bring us back to the survey that was done December 2021. And looking at the spreadsheet that had the raw data, I think there were like 360 respondents, which is really pretty good for a survey in a town our size. There were three top choices listed. The first one was to use some or all of the property for open space. And that was 257 people said, I want that. You were allowed to pick what you want, so this is going to add 360. The second one was to use some, the second most important thing, was to use some or all of the space for indoor public space. 145 respondents chose that. The third was to preserve the existing daycare and community nonprofit uses. That was 116 people. So I, right now, I feel like we're really addressing the first and the third of those things. We're not really addressing using some or all of the space. And I wouldn't say all, because I would never say that, for indoor public space. I'm particularly building, but I would like to use some, you know, like to consider that we use some of that for indoor public space. And so what my hope is, is that when we make a decision about someone to help us through this process, someone with more professional expertise than any of us at this table has, or anybody can expect us to have, that we won't keep our options so narrow that we will say we'd like to learn what is possible in using this space, including, you know, submitting these, as many of these three main goals as we can. I just feel like we don't know what we don't know yet. And that's why, you know, we would go to someone who has professional expertise. They can let us know whether that's even possible, or is it a pipe dream? And so I just would ask that we keep that in mind as we continue down the road on this.
I would offer a slightly different perspective, which is that I, I see options one and two as being variations on creating public space, right, whether it's outdoor recreational or indoor community. So it's public space. Option three was not, does not necessarily go for, is really not something that aims at recreational public space, right? It aims at the preservation of uses that were not, they're a public service, but they're not public spaces, right? And so, in a sense, there's no flexibility, for example, to, to address the community's desire to keep that childcare, right? Just keep that here sort of at a later time, right? You can't have the building done unless they have a facility in Arbour, at least.
Right.
So the only way to address that is sort of on the leading edge of the project.
Sure.
So, and either it's feasible, and it makes sense for us, because it returns revenue to replace what we're going to lose, and it keeps that institution, it makes sense, and it doesn't consume more of the lot than we're willing to consider, right? With a small portion, like either that works or it doesn't. And so if it works, then you've got the rest of the space deployed, right?
Right.
And so at that point, I think it makes sense as part of the master parks planning process to say, should our parks also include some indoor recreational space to supplement the outdoor recreational space?
And I guess I'm, I'm looking at it from the standpoint of, okay, so does that mean that we would, if that played out, we built the daycare center building? Or so would we? We would, yes. The daycare center building would be built, the rest of the property would be developed into parks. And then once the master park plan was done, we would then maybe build an indoor, have an indoor public space built? Are you saying?
I think, when you say the rest of the property would be built into parks, I mean, I think the bid we had, the estimate we have from Panoni right now is basically for, you know, environmental remediation, demolition, and just restoration of the site to grass.
I know.
So the slow, you know, not the grading in grass, right?
Right.
What we do with the property, once it's mostly, you know, brass, like the next step, how we can park it, I guess, should probably be done through selected master parks plans, so I know what we're doing with this, right?
Okay, so you're suggesting, so see, now, this is not something that I had thought the master parks plan would address, indoor public space. But if you're suggesting that is part of that, then that's great.
Good. I would see what would.
I, I, that just never occurred to me. To me, parks is outdoor.
Well, I mean, any park I can think of, it probably has indoor spaces, right?
Not all of them. I would like to offer a perspective that, once you have land, right?
Mm-hmm.
At some point, future generations might decide that they have a need for more indoor public.
I know, but we might decide that right now, too.
Well, we're investigating that. But that would happen through an engagement planning process. I mean, and I, and I guess I said, see, I guess I appreciate, Michelle, the distinction you made between public amenity and the current private use, that really, when they have one opportunity to, if we don't, we don't act on that, or whatever, we don't have an opportunity to act on that, we would have that entire space, which, which I guess I see, you know, I think there's a lot to discuss there. But I don't see it as closing any doors. Okay, see, it felt to me like we closed that door. And I was like, oh, I'm not ready to close that door yet, because I think we should think about that.
I agree.
We might have, we might decide we want indoor space in a way that we currently don't have in any of our buildings.
Right, I mean, I would feel prepared to know what, what it should contain, how it should be, how it should be configured, because all we got was the general feedback, like this is general goals.
Exactly.
And in order to shape that, it would require a much more intensive process and a lot of community engagement.
No, this is really, I thought we were down to just option one or option four, and that's it, and we're not going to consider anything else. And I guess I pictured option four meaning.
It's a decision tree.
Yeah.
Like this, this is like a prior, an initial decision that needs to get made, with respect to whatever, what public spaces we end up having, we end up having access to. If that further, I think, decision should include consideration, right? But this really was important.
Yeah, I, when I went back and looked at, I had remembered that the second and third things were reversed. The daycare came before the indoor public space. I was like, wow, that's interesting, okay, I'd forgotten that, so, yeah. I feel like, I'd let that go. Thank you.
But there's one other thing to keep in mind with all of this, and it is, you know, how the finance, this is all going to work.
Of course.
Because that's what's going to drive it.
Well, and that's the thing where I feel like we don't know yet what we don't know, because we don't know what brands might be out there to do some of the things that we might want to do. That's, you know, there's a, there's people who, that's all they do.
No concern.
Yeah, so, yeah, we want that.
Alright, so does anyone have any consideration, some other suggestion to talk to, about a consult, the H?
HRA.
H, HRA, yeah.
Did you get any indication of when they were providing a piece of scope and service and fee?
I have not heard anything since, since the meeting, so I need to, needs to be followed up with them. Yeah, well, and also I want to get some feedback from council as well.
So please, council, in favor of getting more information. Alright. And just, just as a general note, Michelle, since you were the one who worked on the options, all the options currently under consideration, all expanding green space.
Considerably. Massively.
Yeah, just want to make that clear, that if you are considering all in all, more green space than is currently in the world.
Yeah, I mean, I, I feel option four would really only be reasonable if it probably pretty much tripled the existing, I mean, kept the existing playground and probably just tripled, you know, green space. I don't, it's a larger lot than you sometimes think, because it's sort of covered by these spread out buildings and this parking lot. But if you can really think about how much room is there.
More, I think it's more than tripled.
I, I'm trying to be conservative, I think it could be tripled. But I wonder.
I mean, the one thing I kind of noticed with a lot of the feedback we've gotten is that people seemed okay if we were keeping the small building, which would have increased the open space. But I'm not sure that it would increase the open space all that much more than what you're talking about.
No.
It's probably comparable, so it's just, it's just kind of ironic to me that people were good with that, but, anyway.
I think it's hard to, it's hard to visualize.
It is hard to visualize. That's why I really loved your picture that you gave us of the, looking down on the property and showed us how much is not open space right now.
It's like, there's hardly any open space really. So we can, we can do a lot better.
Yes.
Alright, okay, moving on.
Moving on to be the master park plan at half committee.
Sure, so in their package, as a memo, our last meeting council asked me to give some bulk as to realistic timing for the work of this committee and its formation. I think probably our goal should be, you know, sometime in the fall to really get the committee informed. And then, you know, you know, at the beginning of 2023, really be in a position to really work on the master park plan, with the goal being to have a plan approved at time for grant applications, starting at the beginning of 2024.
And if we get sticker shock at the cost of planning, then we'll see. We can get some grants.
Yeah.
Okay, does anybody have any consideration about that one? Okay, that sounds good. That's it for old business.
Do we want to determine how the at half committee initial description is going to be formulated and described with the scope of work? Is that something that you want to take a few on, do you want?
Yeah, no, I can, I'll put some together, and we'll present that to Borough Council before, you know, and we'll figure out when we want to start soliciting application, or, sorry, we won't solicit applications, but as we talked about last time, but we can talk and figure out when Val Council make the appointments to that committee.
Okay, any other questions? Comments for the good council? I know the Penn Valley Civic Association is having an event at the Staples Parking Lot on Saturday with street vendors and cards and activities, whatnot. They're trying to revitalize that tour, Montgomery Avenue, so. Just outside of Arbour. Mr. Sofie Truck will be there, I promise, so I'll bring my daughter. It's Saturday, I think it's something like 11 to 4. It's this Saturday.
And Fred, we all just got an email from the superintendent, "County moved to high transmission, so masking is now required in schools tomorrow for all elementary students."
Okay, so, for our parents, for their parents, yeah, mandatory masking.
I don't know.
We didn't specify it to be unmoderated. I don't think we anticipated it to be a moderate transmission.
No, but I meant like, we need to have a mask requirement.
We, so, we set a rule that masks would be required in Borough Hall, or in any meetings in Borough Hall, if transmissions were moderate or high. So right now, that's the rule that's in place.
I think I was asking about general masking.
I don't know how, you know, are places bringing it back into like?
I think there's some stores, and maybe that's something that the mayor and the chief can just remind business owners if they choose to require masks, and there's an issue, to call on them. I mean, that's probably.
Right, I think that's what we.
I'd be happy to remind the lunch shop owners.
Okay, so, just be ready, you know, store. I know sometimes.
No, we're, I mean, we handle it on a case-by-case basis. It's usually a proprietor, if they, you know, they can, certainly they're, if they want somebody to leave the store for, you know, extra reason for something like that, we handle those things on a case-by-case basis. You know, we've actually, believe it or not, we've still had situations like that presented to us during the past year. Not surprised as well.
People ought to enjoy our lovely outdoor dining.
It is a good deal if it's happening in the morning.
I think that's it, motion to adjourn.
I'm going to adjourn.
If you're always in favor of adjourned, alright, then we know if that gets sessions. Thank you very much.